Okay, we're back on now with 4.4 with Mr. Wickie on the work assistance by the State National Guard and the practice fields out at Boger. Okay, Mr. Wickie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, I've talked in brief about this idea before. What came to the forefront was as we were trying to prioritize the QSCB, remaining QSCB projects that had been in the postponed status, it seemed logical to move forward with this particular request because, and I have to admit, we're sort of dealing with the website of the National Guard at the moment. It's very difficult to get somebody on the phone to answer a question. So, we are proceeding on the concept that the Guard at some point, and based on my experience, around this time of year, they start planning next year's activities, next summer's activities. And what you have to do in the arrangement of that and putting requests forward to them is you pretty much have to align everything so it's ready to go the minute they say, "Yes, we're interested." So, literally, what I've done is I've included a copy of every document they want us to sign or agree to. And I certainly can go through them all, but I, what I would, I've asked the Board's attorneys to review it. Mark was kind enough to do that. He had some general questions that I think we've addressed for the most part. There are things such as, for example, commitments that the Board has to make, for example, to hold the military harmless in terms of the work they do. Now, that's a little bit of a twist away from what we normally do. We usually hold contractors definitely responsible for their work. The flip side is that if you've worked with the military, and I have in the past, the work that they've done is really quite good. You know, you're dealing with, in effect, people who are trained to do the work they're doing, whether it be moving earth, or laying pipe, or whatever. And I would, I should put this in the context that we're not, we're not doing final work of any sort. The only thing we're doing final of is the stormwater piping. Everything else is going to sort of be just a rough grading of the site, planting of grass, and pretty much having it ready to go for the next phase, which would be the next development, you know, like putting a track in and doing a true football practice surface. But with the money allowed, and we'll get that in a minute, with the money allowed, we would at least get all the stormwater sewers in place and address that part of it for the DINA requirements. And we'd be also be able to use the facilities, the practice field. It just wouldn't be completed to the level that we will ultimately complete the field once money becomes available to do that. But we didn't want this opportunity to go by. We can use, obviously, QSCB funding for doing this portion of the work. And then down, down the road, whether we use current monies that we, you all were just talking about, or fine dollars in the future to do that, that next step, that finish step, that's certainly up to the Board, either now or in the future. But with this, this process, I think there's eight or nine documents that literally have to be signed or addressed in some fashion and sent in before they will even consider your application. So, that's why all the documents are loaded up, so you could at least see them. And we're in the process of, we do have the preliminary engineering study done, and that's ready to go. That was one of the first requirements, was, was you had to have the design work done, and you had to have the engineering analysis done on the site, and we've done that. So, those two pieces are ready to go. We have the budget prepared. For all intents and purposes, there's, there's nothing earth-shattering about anything they're asking for. The unusual thing, I thought, was they're asking for us to cover housing. And I thought, gee, when I was, back in my military days, housing used to be considered of a little tent and a shovel. And I guess it's changed these days. So, they do require funding for housing. And again, we haven't been able to talk with them about it. We certainly would raise the question of, can we provide you with a facility in which you put up bunk beds, lay down mats, whatever, and use that as your housing? We're not sure, but we funded it as though we were going to put people up into a hotel for the period of time that they would be working on, on the site. And that, that's just so we have an adequate amount of money in the, in the budget to do that. So, I certainly would ask Mark if you have any comments that you'd like to make about the idea.
No, I did review, I did review the documents. And obviously, it's something I don't believe we've done before, at least not in my fifteen-plus years with the Board, but I think it's a creative effort to try to get some essentially free manpower to deal with some of the budget constraints we're under. And I think you highlighted, the biggest worry I had in reviewing the documents was the idea of a whole harmless, that we can't, if they don't do a good job, we don't have any contractual resort, recourse that we would usually have. But I think for the type of work we're looking at with basic grading, the risk seems fairly small. And I've talked to Len about the need to have good supervision out there. Obviously, if we're not going to have recourse, we need to make sure that they're doing what we want, the pipes are where we want them, that the work is what we want, because if they, once they leave, there's nothing, we don't, you know, we can't come back later and say, "Wait a minute, this is the wrong elevation," or something's wrong. But I think with the right supervision, you know, you're, you're getting free labor. So, you're, I understand why the National Guard doesn't want to provide free folks and then get sued later with a claim that they didn't do a good job. And I'd have much graver concerns if we're talking about a structure. I don't think we'd want to put students in a building where no one would stand behind it. But for the kind of fieldwork and groundwork, I'm comfortable with, with the idea. And obviously, it's something the Board needs to be comfortable with, but to me, I think the risk is, the risk is small, and you're getting the, the benefit of free labor, and they've got a cooperative program, they're getting some practical experience, and we're getting the free manpower. So, it seems to offer the potential of a win-win for both sides.
I would offer, too, that, and I want, wanted to go to the, the budget figure on this. Can you, Kelly, can you bring up the budget? I just, I don't want to mess this up. I was going to say that we don't expect the duration of this to be any longer than certainly a summer's worth of work. And matter of fact, if they really commit forces to it, it's really not that, that big an effort. But I think that, in keeping that in mind, we did put in a line item for Construction Administration, so we could hire clerks of the works, a civil engineer ideally, that would be able to be our, our, our eyes on, on the work that's being done in the field. So, we want to make sure that we do meet the level of standards that we expect on all of our school property projects, and, and make certain that, you know, that, that the work that they're doing is of that quality. And this budget does describe the initial pieces of the construction material that, oh, that was the other piece. We, we have to purchase the materials that they will install. So, we, we have to provide for all the erosion control fencing and all, the drainage piping or subsurface water piping, and then landscaping and turf. So, we've provided for the dirt that they'll, they might need to, to bring it in and top seed the property, and certainly all of the underground piping. So, we've paid, we're providing to pay for that in the budget. We have allocated about a thousand gallons' worth of fuel based on conversations that I had with the transportation folks here in the county. And we, again, we've provided, we're assuming maybe a four-man crew. It might only be a couple of people, but we just picked that number and, and said, you know, figuring five nights a week, about a month's worth of work is what we anticipate this taking. And a lot will depend on how many crew members they have. But we, we allotted for the, the housing for the, as required, and then permits, and the Construction Administration fee of $15,000. So, we think we have the things that we need in, in the budget covered. And, and the money is, as I'll get to in our, in our next presentation, covered through the QSCB funding.
Okay, Board members, do you have any questions about this particular item? It's the recommendation of the Superintendent that this agreement with the North Carolina National Guard for the work at the Charles E. Boger Elementary School fields be approved, including the expenditure of $115,000 from the QSCB funds. So, that's what the motion will be on the 17th. Now, do you have any discussion? Do you have any questions that you need to ask Mr. Wickie? If you do, Mr. Ferg, go ahead.
I guess I've got a few questions. So, we're not really sure how many people, right? I mean, you got, you think a certain amount, so this dollar figure could go up.
It could, yes.
Okay. And what if, I mean, if we had, they get started in this process, and we have a disaster of some sort somewhere, and they have to leave, take their equipment and people and go? I guess that's just chances we take, right?
It is. The, the, and I don't have the numbers with me this evening. I wanted to say that, Steve, I'm going to ask you, do you, do you recall, I remember seeing the budget, and I'm trying to recall the amount of labor that the engineer estimated. I want to say it was like $250,000 or something. It was substantial. There was, the total cost of your call for the whole project was about $600,000. And I think the labor costs were about $250,000. So, we're looking at a substantially less cost. And, I bless you. So, it, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable gamble, I guess, is what I'm saying. I've done a couple of these projects, not this specific project type, but I've done a couple of firing ranges where the military came in and assisted us in building. And they did a bang-up job. We're done in a timely fashion. They, they don't get a lot of extra time. I mean, they, they have a lot of responsibilities, because they take on a lot of these projects. And so, I wouldn't be surprised if they allow them, you know, three weeks maybe, or four weeks, and then say, "You're done. You're moving out of there. So, get, get it done." And the only question would be how much equipment and how many men they're going to assign to us.
Okay. That's good for me.
Thank you, Mr. Ferg. Ms. Fertball.
I like the, if you will, the creativity of this, from the standpoint of, you know, we, you can look for grant money in all different ways, and this is basically a grant by getting the free labor. So, I mean, I, I think it's certainly worth the possibility. And, you know, there are other places in the district where, and even with County Parks and Rec, where they, so they, they would like to do different kinds of field projects and whatnot. And, you know, maybe we can be the guinea pigs here and see how well it works out, and hopefully, it's great, and, you know, it becomes a good example, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Seabees probably could, yeah.
Leanne and I do. I, I think this is a great opportunity. The one thing I thought, I'm just thinking through the budget, because I know this is going to be an additional monies coming out of the QSCB and not a project that was initially there. But I was thinking it might be worth talking with the City of Concord. You know, they have the fire stations that they allow people to come in for different reasons and spend time there. And that's a $6,000 savings. So, that might be a collaborative effort.
That's a good idea.
And Fire Station Eight and Nine, or Nine particularly, is right out there, really close. So, I know they're always wanting real good use out of those facilities. So, that might be worth having a conversation. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Kudos to you, Ms. Blackwelder. That was a good comment. Tess, she's on, she's thinking sharp tonight. Mr. Cogger, do you have any comments?
Yes. I mean, in response to, something may happen, you know, get called away. One of my favorite sayings, "It's a risk, but it's a calculated risk." I mean, and it's worth, it's worth us making that calculation. So, I, I agree, this is a, a good way to go about trying to get that done. I am curious, though, do we, your numbers, are they based on any type of material takeoff? Okay. And will they do their own takeoff and tell us what they need, or are we going to show them the numbers and then let them verify?
Yes, sir. We, we had an engineering takeoff done on this. I mean, a cost estimate done by an engineering firm to validate the amount of materials needed and the rough costs.
Okay, perfect.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, I just keep the faith, and I say, "Let's do it." So, I just believe.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Minnet, do you have comments?
A great idea of thinking outside of the box. And that's what I think, especially when we're talking about tax dollars. In this day and age, we need to think outside the box.
Thank you, all of you Board members. I think we've got pretty well clarity, got pretty well direction here. So, everybody's good with consent agenda for the 17th. Anytime we can have collaborative efforts like that, it's always, it always benefits, you know, right down to the students, because this is going to give them an additional playing area that they don't have now. The ground is there, just hasn't been finished, and we need to get it finished so it can be usable. And we're going to get it done for probably about, maybe a filth of what it would have costed, somewhere thereabouts, fourth. So, anyway, Mr. Wickie, you had this for the consent agenda on the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, you're, you're up next also for, matter of fact, 4.5 and 4.6. The next one's the QSCB postponed projects. And that's where we're going to talk about a little bit about the, the money that's there and how we prioritize those lists. So, Mr. Wickie, it's yours.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you is the list of projects that we have left to do, and we're in the, in effect, the postponed status. In looking at the projects, I'll, I'll say that the, the first five projects are the ones that we're recommending the Board approve to continue with. And basically, they're, the way we looked at these were, and why we made the recommendations, was that they were either safety issue with regard to the kitchen hoods and the replacement boilers. Boilers are probably more than safety, they're probably an environmental issue, because obviously, if they go out, even if one of them goes out, that's, that's going to be a problem for the school this coming winter. Three and four are the ongoing program needs at Concord High School. And I also have some photographs of those buildings, we'll talk about in a moment. But those two buildings have been around a while. They, the, the difficulty with projects three and four, however, is that neither of them, based on the need, are funded adequately. And then, of course, five, which is what we just talked about, the practice fields at Northwest Cabarrus. In looking at the group below the line, still to remain as postponed, as I called it, we have the two wireless upgrades at, at the two high schools, six and seven. We have Beverly Hills Elementary Schools chiller and controls, the Mount Pleasant Middle School chiller and controls project, and the Northwest High School upgrade of the, of air entrance. The, the wireless projects, at this point, based on the work that's been done to date, and based on what's still needed, is greatly reduced from the $25,000 that we've shown. We believe that we can handle the funding for those projects. You're shaking your head.
Okay.
Okay, okay, yes. I'm glad. Dr. Prost agrees with me. I thought we had agreement.
We had it.
We do, okay. That, that the dollars needed for those are quite a bit less, and that we can handle those with other sources of money. The Mount Pleasant School and the, well, let me, the Beverly Hills Elementary School is not dissimilar from the Mount Pleasant Middle School projects, from the standpoint that we're going to, we're proposing major renovations at the schools. In the case of Beverly Hills Elementary School, it's probably in better shape than Mount Pleasant Middle School. And talking to my staff, they're saying, "That's not a system that demands replacement at the moment." And really, because it could be dramatically changed due to renovation, the sizing of that equipment and everything would be, it would be very difficult to know what to do right now, based on what may happen there in the near future. So, their recommendation is not to do that one. The very same thing is somewhat true at Mount Pleasant Middle School, as we've talked about before. Our recommendation is to replace the whole thing. So, to put any equipment in there, you'd really be throwing good money in a bad situation, and it's just not a recommendation we want to make to, to the, your Board. And so, we'd, we'd recommend that neither of those go forward. And finally, of course, the upgrade to the entrance, as we talked about, that money was moved. We, we did make modifications using our maintenance funds, and we think we've got the security issue pretty well solved. The bird issue is an ongoing problem, but trust me, birds are problems at almost every one of our schools. So, we, we're going to find a magic solution for them, hopefully, an attraction that takes them from, from where they like to house themselves in our schools over to the trees that are next door. We haven't figured out how to get them from one to the other yet. But, but the entrance way, really, at Northwest, from the standpoint of the staff's concerns, is pretty well solved at this point. So, our recommendation is we take the, the remaining dollars, and, and as you can see, the majority of it is currently in the Mount Pleasant Middle School project, and use all of those dollars to basically fund items one through five. And I'll take you now to the bottom of this sheet. And by the way, if we do that, we would, considering the, the need of roughly $349,000 for the projects we're recommending, to, to, to give them sufficient monies to be done, that would still give us a surplus of about $57, almost $58,000. And that's sort of our, our contingency at this point. Once we get closer to getting these projects wrapped up, trust me, we'll find something to spend $58,000 on if we have that money available to us at that time. But we'll be watching that very carefully. And I think somebody asked last time, "What, what's happening with the money that's ending in the other projects that we're completing as we go?" All of that's going to fall into this, this category of a contingency fund. And then, there is always work. There's always a hood that needs to be replaced. There's always additional work that will fall under what I think are, are very worthwhile QSCB projects. And we've talked with DPI, and they've simply said, "You just need to pull all that together and make a final request, and we'll, we'll look at that at that time." So, I don't see that as a problem, but we want to do it so that we have enough time left in that window to April of 2014 to get it done and, and get the money expended. So, that said, the last item is talking about, I just got to come down a little further, this last note that talks about items three and four. Those are the two projects, the Voc Ed Building at Concord High School and the weight room renovations at Concord. Both of those projects, as I said, in and of themselves are underfunded. What we're recommending, and this is based on conversation with the principal and her staff, is that we combine both of those projects and fund one of them, in effect, at a, at a cost of $250,000. That's basically the same amount of money I've, I've got shown in these same, in these two lines colored in pink. What that will allow us to do, now, now I'm going to have to go to photographs, so if you don't mind pulling those up. That will allow us to make a single addition to either the Voc Education Building. No, keep, I'm sorry, it's, go back to the cover sheet. Here we go. Thank you. This is the Voc Ed Building, and right now, we've basically got a wood shop in here. This is currently used as their weight room for the school and storage and bathrooms and all in the middle. The, what the school has determined is that they really want to find space for their fire, fire training, Fire Academy, excuse me, facility. And so, the question was initially, they thought the simple addition, I should have gotten another picture, but a simple addition within this, this little opens portion of the H of this plan would be sufficient. What we've said is, it won't work. It's not enough space. So, we now are looking at an area out to the, at the east, guys? I think that's the east direction of the building, where we could add a, approximately a 2,000-square-foot addition to house that, and, and leave the weight room in this portion of the building and upgrade that with paint. And, you know, basically, it's, by the way, the floor that was deteriorating and all, that's all been repaired. Maintenance took care of that. We, we fixed all that. So, basically, what they need is paint up, fix up, and, and improve, ultimately, improve the weightlifting equipment in the building. But the main thing is trying to figure out how we do the Fire Academy. The other option, as I go back to this, is to add a new weight room for the school at this portion, again, the east side of the existing fieldhouse. Build that there and go back and renovate the existing weight space, weight room space in the Voc Ed Building for the Fire Academy to use. Either one of those is acceptable. And what I'd like to do, what, what my other document that we had attached, basically described what both of those options include, and some of the things that we don't know. You know, the, the, the problem with the weight room addition to the stadium, to the, a fieldhouse at the stadium, is simply that we don't know what's in the ground and how much we may be impacted by utility changes. We also, in either case, don't know the soil conditions. So, we need to do some further investigation. And really, at this point, we're simply asking the Board to, one, go back to my list and, and give us the approval, if you will, of this list of projects. Seems to be slowly coming up. And allow us to do, with your approval, projects one through five. And then, allowing us to combine three and four as one project, let our architects work, Mortzberg in this case, work with us, our staff, and the school staff to come up with the best solution within the budget of $250,000, and find one of the solutions that will work, whether it be the addition to the fieldhouse or the addition to the Voc Ed Building, and present that in a, in an appropriate format for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie. Okay, Board members, there you have it. You know, the two options, then they're going to look at that and get back to us. But the motion for us on the 17th will be the recommendation of the Superintendent that the updated list of QSCB postponed projects be approved as presented. I'd like to open the floor for discussion, and we'll start on Ms. Minnet's side.
I think the plan sounds, sounds fine. I have no problem with any of it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Minnet. Ms. Carpenter.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Answered my questions, and we're getting down that list. And that's where I want to be, down the list. And I'm glad to see the weight room and the vacation. So, whatever you can get worked out within the budget, that's good with me.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, Mr. Cogger.
Yep. Well, we're down the list, except for Mount Pleasant Middle. I guess I just want to make sure that I'm following you correctly. Your recommendation is that the entire system at Mount Pleasant Middle needs to be replaced, and the 406, 441 only does a partial half, two-thirds?
No, no, sir. The remaining funds would be adequate to replace the system. But the problem is that we'd be putting in a brand-new system in a 50-year-old building.
Right, okay.
And it's not building, I mean, we're replacing systems in 50-year-old high schools, but they have a lot better bones than this, this building does, unfortunately.
Okay. I just, I guess I wanted to make sure I'm following. I, I, I get you. I mean, I understand that's a difficult spot to be. I'm curious to hear other Board members that have been here longer than, than I have, who they have either ties to Mount Pleasant or understand more of the historical background of what's going on out there, or any promises that have been made. It's, it's tough to, it's tough to walk away and just tell them that, "Well, sorry." But I, it's, it's a difficult spot to be with, with the age of the school. Like you said, putting something, you know, good money after bad. So, I, I do understand that. As far as the other two projects go, I'm eager to hear what the, you know, which direction the school wants to do, based on what the budget actually ends up laying out. You know, it's tough to sit here and tell you which way to go. You do some investigative work, and then we'll do it. But as far as that, that part goes, I'm fine with that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Blackwelder.
I guess you were saying, "Me." To put that in perspective, I graduated from that building. That was a high school, once upon a time. And I'm, shut up. And I'm so glad that Todd and Steve are in the audience. I know, I heard that. This was a huge issue several years ago about Mount Pleasant Middle School, only for the fact that that building by the community wanted it to be renovated. But we did lots of studies, and that is going to cost so much more to renovate that building versus tear it down, start all over again. So, I would never be in favor for doing anything out there. I know that, that that's going to have to take place. Plus, there's that huge, you know, situation with Highway 49 that's going to take place. There's so many variables out there that I don't think we need to put any money into Mount Pleasant Middle School before. There's a whole lot of other more decisions made. And with that being said, I totally agree with us doing what we're doing out at Concord. But I do have a question. So, if we put, let's see, the fieldhouse, if we combine the fieldhouse with the weight room at Concord High School, now, there's no additional footprint that has to be done. We're just doing within that envelope, correct?
No, no, that's not true, but...
It's going to expand.
It will, which, I don't know where you're going.
That budget seems really under...
Well, but the good thing is that we have laundry facilities in a, in a fieldhouse. We have an ability to avoid the, the impervious material increase on the site. We're going to recommend that we capture the water and use it as gray water for other facilities within the building.
So, what is the expansion that will be done?
It's actually an expansion to the east, and it'll be about a 2,000-square-foot, well, I don't know that it has to be that big for the, for the weight room. It probably needs to be something less than that. But it, and it'll be a, a brand-new weight room addition to the existing fieldhouse.
To the existing fieldhouse, okay. All right. So, that's, that budget, I have issues with, knowing all the stuff that's going to...
Oh, I agree.
Just calling 811 for locating lines is going to be an issue. The vocational education building. So, tell me one more time, vocational education building.
Right. If that, if that were the option chosen, we'd build the 2,000-square-foot addition for a new, new space for the Fire Academy. And that would include classroom and storage area. And they'd also have parking available for some of their trucks.
So, that one's getting, getting an additional footprint as well.
Yes.
So both scenarios get additional footprints. We're not just within the envelope.
No.
Those budget numbers don't, don't sound...
It's either or, it's one or two, right?
Right, but still, $250,000. You can't build a house for $250,000 nowadays at any, you know, that, to me, that's just a, I really want to be clear about that budget. We get into this so much with renovations and remodels to existing buildings because there's so many issues hanging out there. You know, I just want to make sure that we're all real clear on that. I'm good for it, I think they're excellent ideas, but I just want to make sure that that budget dollar isn't even close. So you're saying, as long as we take away what's being done at Mount Pleasant Middle School, that's gonna actually accommodate some of that?
Yes.
In that budget process?
And I will say, in honesty, we're not, we're not looking at building classroom space for the Fire Academy as it would be normally, because they tend to, they're more out in the, in the field, working on their, on their trucks and equipment than they are necessarily in the classroom. There is classroom time, but it's not the same, it doesn't have to be the same type of classroom space. This is gonna be a more open, more...
Right, and I get that, I guess I'm just making sure, you know, we're talking about, I'm sure getting back into sprinkler systems, you know, none of that stuff has to be with, with capacity space? Okay, I really would, I want to make sure that we're real clear on that, because that is a huge, you know, to me, that's, that's not a trade-off, you know? If that was a couple million dollars in their city, and I'd feel a whole lot better, but $250,000, that's just, to me, not a very large budget for either one of those projects. But have we done, I mean, are we just, how did we come up with that figure? I guess that's what I want to know. How did we come up with that figure?
Well, I mean, we're looking at 2,000 square feet and multiplying by a number right now.
You did it by a hundred dollars. And see, a hundred dollars a square foot, to me, would not be significant for a renovation or redo model. Todd, are you comfortable with that?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
We haven't been comfortable with any of these budgets, but it is what it is. But I think what we're talking about is building one large space. You're essentially building a wall off of that, whether it's the fieldhouse or the vocational building, spanning it with bar joists, concrete slab, and calling it done. That's sufficient, really, for a weight room, and I think would be sufficient for their Fire Academy class, because really, all they're looking for is, is open space. Right now, they're sort of shoehorned into an old science lab. So it's, you know, it's, as Lynn said, it's not elaborate classroom space. Hopefully, we could position, we don't have to get into doing toilets and that sort of thing, because they're already there, at least in the case of the fieldhouse.
Okay, but I'm gonna stop you right there. What if they're not up to code, and we are, we are creating an extra square footage to that meets the, what is it, the, now, if you upgrade 35%, you have to bring the whole building up to code?
Well, there, as Lynn mentioned, there are a lot of things we don't know yet, and that's why we gotta do some studying first. We don't know enough about the site conditions, we don't know enough about either of the existing buildings, you know, one of those buildings was built by students in the late 60s, early 70s. So we would want to tread into it carefully and find out a little bit more before we commit, I think, at least, that's our feeling about it.
Well, that, that would be my thought, and that's why I'm saying, I don't feel comfortable with those numbers whatsoever. That's just a lot of unknowns out there. So how do we, are we asking to make this decision on the 17th that we're gonna allocate this, or this is just one of the things that we're looking at for y'all to investigate?
I think what we're asking for is the ability to investigate it. We're setting that number, simply, it's a budget exercise at this point. We need to start somewhere. We have to have a budget in place to allow these gentlemen to begin their work, and then we'll come back to you with our findings.
Just one construction issue. Will you have to cut a door into the existing, into that existing building?
Well, in both cases, maybe too hard to go back to the photos, but in both cases, there are already doors on that side of the building, in both the fieldhouse and the vocational, that we could connect to. If we use the fieldhouse and it becomes a weight room, we would definitely want to connect back in to access the lockers and the toilets. If we use the vocational building and it becomes the Fire Academy, we probably wouldn't want a door to connect those two anyway. The Fire Academy would be more standalone.
Right.
It doesn't need a connection to the weight room. So in both cases, there are openings there that we could take advantage of if we need to.
Okay. I hate to be the devil's advocate, but, you know, construction's what I do, so, and every time we get into one of these projects, you know, it never is where it starts, and that budget is extremely lower than what I would even think we would start with. So I'd really want to be real comfortable with that before I'd be okay with it. But I'm okay with us looking into it, and I love the idea. I'm sorry.
We'd take more money if you had.
I'm sure you would, yeah, and I'm thinking, we're, we're gonna need it, but I'm definitely open to it. I think they're great ideas to combine and utilize those and to make that happen, that's good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Furtinball, you have your questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Lynn, when I, I'm okay with the postponed projects and to follow in, you know, that list that we shift the money. With regard to the options on the possible additions, the fieldhouse, first of all, the QSCB money is focused on, there has to be at least a partial academic purpose to do the project. The fieldhouse is not accessible from the school. So any student who would have, it's on the opposite side of the stadium, so it's down a hill, over the river, through the dale. And that is if the stadium was open. Best case is, it would not be accessible ADA. Worst case is, the students would have to literally walk around the baseball field and go over to Brookwood to come into the fieldhouse, right?
No, no, that road cuts, that road cuts right, straight to the main entrance, this little road right here.
Okay.
It's between the baseball field and the football field is where they are.
But where's the vocational?
To the right of that building, right there. That's closer to the school.
Yeah, that's what I thought, these were closer to the school. I'm just worried about the distance, if you were going to put the weight room on the fieldhouse, even though that might be preferred, I think we get into the fieldhouse issue because multiple schools wanted fieldhouses. I think that's an issue. But I think it's also the accessibility to have weightlifting classes, which is a big part of the PE program in high schools. So if you're going to have it in the right proximity, I think it almost has to go on option one, and you make that a bigger academic space, if you will, where students go for classes. So I guess, I'm just saying, I don't think option two is really feasible for the reasons the money's being used, because there's no classes in the fieldhouse. And, you know, it definitely has, if you will, it's kind of like sliding money to use it for the wrong purpose, kind of, to renovate a fieldhouse, basically. So I'm okay with that, as long as it is with the vocational buildings.
You know, and I, I'm, we don't have the principal here to speak to the issue, but we did have both, the principal and RAP there. And I guess if you look at it, I mean, the, the weightlifting can be part of the PE program, and they looked at the additional walk as, it's, it's good for the kids. It's not a bad thing to have them walk a little bit further, in this case, to get to a gym class in the weightlifting area. I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just saying, that, that was their opinion at the time, so.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, with the, I don't know how many minutes are between classes, can it feasibly be done? I don't think they can, that's a good distance. I don't think they can feasibly get to and from another class, and then you're gonna be dealing with constant tardies. So, which is another issue. I mean, I just think we have to think of what was the intent there, because, like I said, there are many schools who want fieldhouses or fieldhouse improvements, and we pretty much say it's up to the Boosters Club to do fieldhouses, so.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinball, Mr. Fur.
Okay, I'm gonna go down the, kind of the same road Cindy went down. I agree with what you're wanting to do, but if I'm a football coach, I want that weight room in my fieldhouse, like every, every high school coach in this county would like to have. And the way I look at it, and I may be looking at it wrong, but that's a way to upgrade that fieldhouse without using Boosters Club money, like we've told Robinson they have to do and what other schools have had to do. Maybe, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but, we're talking about Concord High School, right? Okay.
Yes, sir. I, I think the only thing I can offer is that, you know, it's the, it's, it's a logical opportunity to look at.
And I don't blame them.
We weren't weighing the, you know, the politics of it, honestly, we were just looking at what's possible, given the limited monies we have left and, and the needs at Concord, so.
Well, yeah, and here's what I'm looking at, like, if you, like, if you just put, put a weight room in there, and you don't do any other upgrade whatsoever with bathrooms or lockers or anything like that, then, you know, maybe someone would understand it, but you take another coach who, when they go to, go to that school, and they dress in that locker room, and they see the upgrades that's in, in there, then we're gonna have issues down here. I mean, that's the only thing that I would be concerned with.
And to be honest with you, in talking with the principal, I think her, and I don't think I'm misspeaking when I say, her first desire would be to have the new fire station building, or Fire Academy building, up at the Voc Ed building. And I, and I think that's, that's what she would prefer. Whether it can all happen there or not is something we have to look at.
Yeah, but another thing, too, in Concord's defense, they probably had the worst weightlifting facilities than anyone in this county, which really surprised me, and that was one of the things we learned on that tour. I was, oh, yes, I was amazed at what they got. I mean, they do, they definitely need an upgrade.
Mr. Chair, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment along that line, since we took those tours when I was chair. You know, that, that only makes sense, I'm sure that's why they've actually made that recommendation. I mean, to put the Fire Academy with the vocational, that is what they are, and put the weight room with the fieldhouse, I mean, that all makes sense. I'm not sure about the logistics for the weight room and the, and the fieldhouse, I know that's probably a little out there. But I know when we first initiated these contracts, there was the stipulation that it did have to be some type of academic space, you know, that type of thing. So did you even look into that, to see if we could feasibly do that and meet those guidelines? If not, we need to. I remember that was an issue, because that came as an issue with some of the things we were gonna do out at Northwest. So this might even be a mute point.
Well, option one keeps, still gives the fire program...
Only if we go with option one.
Well, no, I mean, it keeps the fire program and the weight and whatever's in the extra building all together, as opposed to splitting the weight room to a different location. So it keeps all those extra classes together.
Right, but I'm saying, only if we do that. You know, if we, if we decided to go with a different one, then we would have to look at that. If we went with option two, or three, or whatever Lynn labeled that to be, we would have to know that it met the guidelines, what I'm saying, before we made the decision.
What I'd like to recommend to the board at this time would be that, instead of moving this to the consent agenda on the 17th, that we put it on the action agenda for a little more discussion and to give you time to bring back some more information to us from the principal there, so that it can somehow include the academic space that the federal government requires on the QSCB money. And if that's in agreeance with the board, that's what we'll do for the action agenda on the 17th.
I get, excuse me, I guess that's, fine, I would like to make, I'd be remiss if I didn't make one other comment, since I brought up earlier in our discussion of the project at Northwest, that we're sitting on the edge of our seat, trying to figure out, wonder if we're gonna come in under budget or not. Well, here we are, we're looking at $406,441 that we've decided, from what I hear, is not worth putting where it's slotted for, and before we send that off somewhere else, I'd sure like to know where we stand on Northwest Caver. So I'm not sure I'm gonna be ready to support this next Monday. It's not that I don't support the project, but, you know, if we get left with $57,000, I, you know, that, that just seems like that's a roll of the dice, and then all of a sudden, we've got a big project that we've got a big problem with. So anyway, that's just, I, after my turn passed, I thought of that, and I'd be, just, you know, that, that's what I'm thinking currently.
Well, some good thoughts, Mr. Kiger, no doubt, and, but keep in mind, we've still got some contingencies in other QSCB projects that have not been completed yet, and I feel like that there'll still be some money left there, is that right, Mr. Wiki?
Yes.
Do you have any kind of a guess to make of what you think we may have?
I will by the 17th.
You'll know on the 17th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know...
No, I'm not being facetious, but I mean, we, we, I'd be really guessing at this point, so I'd prefer to just step out and say...
Okay, well, that's fine, you know, but I feel like, as Mr. Kiger said, $57,000's not a lot, when you consider the, the comments that Mrs. Blackwelder made about the cost of the construction project itself that we're talking about, and then when you're looking at what Mr. Kiger said, the, the Northwest project there, when we're already know that we're at or possibly over budget and don't have all the other things. So anyway, we'll just need to come up with a little better plan, and that'll give us a time to, between now and the 17th, to have another discussion then with more information. Is that in agreements with the board?
Yes.
Okay, that's how we'll move forward then?
Thank you.
All right, so that will conclude that part. Now, we're gonna move on to the last part of our agenda tonight, and that's the 4.6. And Mr. Wiki is at the podium to talk to us about the bids for the furniture out at Concord High School also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Dr. Probst is getting this up to a scale that even I can read, I would like to point out that one of the requirements, the unique thing about this particular furniture bid is that it was required that we bid this work. Because it is part of QSCB, we have to bid all work, except for professional services. So that's the reason we bid it. We actually had 34 firms pick up the bid documents, so there were lots of people, lots of firms with interest. We ended up with five, six firms that actually bid the various pieces. And the reason we broke it out the way we did was, we certainly could have taken, you know, a sum of all the parts and just said, that's the number we want. But we felt that, especially in light of how many people were actually gonna potentially bid this, 34, 34 firms, we said, well, let's look at how we can best make something available to as many people, as many firms as possible. That was the goal of QSCB, I think it was the goal of this board, to spread the wealth, if you will, and give as many firms an opportunity. So that's why we broke it up the way we did. And the bidders seemed to think it was fair. We did get very good bidding, you know, if we take, and, and again, I didn't add up all the numbers specifically, I guess in looking at, I believe the total, and I'm, I didn't do this math myself, but, for some reason, the total isn't on here. Okay, the total across the bottom of all of the low bids comes out to about 49, just over $49,000. If you recall, we were budgeted at $85,000, so the bidding process worked, obviously. What we're in the process of doing is trying to get information from all of the vendors right now to make an apples-to-apples comparison. We have it on most of them, but we're missing a few pieces. So I can't tell you this, this evening that we have absolute confidence in every one of the bids as meeting specifications. We have been told by bidder number one, I'll say Interior Systems, the very first bidder listed, that given the, the two bids that they were successful on, they would like to withdraw. They don't feel that they can, they can supply just those two pieces of the bid and, and do it in a cost-effective manner. So they've asked to withdraw their bid for, and I don't have these numbers, but this was the round bistrot tables and the soft seating, as it's called. We have talked with the second lowest bidder, which in that case is Palmer Hamilton, and they are willing to meet the bid of the lowest bidder, meet the price of the lowest bidder on those two items, if, if we, you know, give them to them. So that was good news. We didn't ask them to do that, by the way, we just asked them to look at their bids and sort of pointed them at, at the bid tab and said, can you do anything for us? And they said, we will, we will match that price. So that was, that was good news. So overall, as I say, we haven't had, we don't have a, we can't put a seal of approval on every one of the vendors yet. We will certainly be able to do that by the 17th, as we, we, we expected everything in our office by last week. We haven't gotten it all, but we expect it in the next couple of days. So that said, I would ask for your patience until the 17th. I will be happy to come back before you and, and say, you know, we're good with everything that's before you, or we need to make a change. But I anticipate that, you know, we, like everything else, we've listed three, we've given sort of a recommended or preferred vendor, but, but not so, we just used somebody as the basis for our bid, and, and said, you know, we'll accept equals. And that's what we're doing, we're looking at the equals right now. And so by the following meeting, we should have a final recommendation to you on this. But from all intents and purposes, even if we had to go up a few thousand dollars, we would be good. The other way of doing this is if you're comfortable with what we're proposing, as long as we don't exceed $85,000 or whatever cap you want to put on us, we can continue on, we can then write the purchase orders and get, get the ones approved as quickly as we can and get the materials ordered as quickly, if you're comfortable with that approach.
Well, Mr. Wiki, I appreciate you making that call today, you know, and talking to the Palmer. Dr., Mr. Wiki and I talked earlier, and there wasn't but about seven or eight hundred dollars difference between the two low bid and next to the low bid, and you did better than I thought. I thought maybe we'd split the difference, you know, it's not that much money, but it's just another, another way of trying to be extremely prudent with the money that we have. with the money that we have. And if it saves us 350, if it saves us $700, that can be used somewhere else. So here we have it, board, you know, the, the bids, the question that we have here, and I, I would imagine we'll probably want to just wait till, till next week and have it on the action agenda till Mr. Wickey brings things back to us, because these that are Palmer, we want to make sure that we're not getting a substandard or a sub-quality or an inferior product. We have to replace it in three or four years down the road, so we don't want that. And I would like to recommend that we ask Mr. Wickey to make sure that we're not getting a substandard product, that we're getting like a preferred brand vendor-type product, and then bring that back to us again next week with that information for the action agenda. All right, does the board members have any discussion on this? If we do, we start on, Mr. Fur, you have any questions? Okay, Ms. Furtenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about the one where there were only two bidders. What happens now with the fiberglass boots?
In that case, our recommendation would be to accept the lower of the two bids, but clearly you can tell us to go out the bid and we'll rebid it. We're not sure why we got no bids from the other vendors. We can go back and talk to them and find out.
Well, if we award that bid to the lower vendor, they may want to do their other two. Then I just shut mine down.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Because they were $15,000. So before we jump the gun and move those two low bids to the secondary vendor, I think we need to figure out what we're going to do with the fiberglass boots.
That is a very good point, yes.
Because then they would have three parts and they may very well accept it, right? So, Mr. Chair, could we agree tonight to, to allow Mr. Wickey to discuss that with the first vendor listed there, that we as a board would favor? I don't think we want any more delays with this. I think the cafeteria renovations were already completed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And they just don't have the new furniture. So I, I, I'm really not sure why this wasn't bid sooner, but I know there's a lot of more, a lot more paperwork with QSCB. So I'd, I'd rather see, tell the first bidder that we are interested in pursuing. They would then have three bids. Do they want to keep all three, or do they, they hold by their declination on the two smaller amounts?
Okay.
So is that reasonable?
That's pleasing to the board.
Absolutely. I, I think that's, that's a good catch, Ms. Furtenbaum. I don't know why I didn't see that. I'm looking right, right there at it, but we only had two out of the five, six that bid for that. And obviously, the interior, interior systems is the one that had the lower bid, so...
Right, then Mr. Wickey could bring us back.
Right.
Here's the whole dollar amount, everything's agreed to between amongst the vendors, however you rearrange those three particular items that would be in question now. And then we'll have the final package on Monday.
All right, we can do that and it'll be on the action agenda. Is the board okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wickey.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If the board will give me the pleasure of asking a question to go back to what was going on at Concord High School, can I ask a quick question, just so we can have some additional information for next Monday night? Lynn, you might be able to answer this.